Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to begin our work session with our consultant from Slaughter and Associates. And I'd like to go ahead and ask him to come forward and take us through the latest plan that you have submitted to us and that we have published on our website.
Thank you very much. Everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
I'm Mike Slaughter with Slaughter and Associates, urban planning consultants. I have with me today Mr. Richard Donovan. He's one of my planners. And he will be during this work session, if we want to go into the actual GIS and move some census blocks, he will be able to do that for us. Since we last had our public meeting, we received input from the city council regarding some changes, which ultimately created the plan two that we have before us here. And just to go back briefly, we have a benchmark plan, which takes your current council districts that were developed based on the 2010 decennial census. We brought the 2020 decennial census block information into it, which shows us that we are out of balance from the one person, one vote principle. We discussed that at the last meeting. At the last meeting as well, we had a Plan One, which does get us in balance with the one person, one vote principle. Since that time, we have received input from some city council persons regarding some changes from Plan One to Plan Two. And then I have handed out to you a little PowerPoint presentation. We're going to go over the actual numbers of this. So, Richard, could you come here just one second? And Richard worked closely with me on developing changes between Plan One and Plan Two. Richard, could you quickly explain the changes between the one and two, just geographically, and then I will get into the numerical changes?
Yeah, so the big changes that we made were taking District Six back where it was basically what it was or is today, and then adding some population to it, to the west. And that caused us to go take, move part of five over into seven, bring seven down into a part that was District One. District Two, One, and Four all moved some into Limestone County. District One is the one that really moved the most over into Limestone County, in between those two. And then District Three pulled a little bit, or pulled mostly from District Four due to that shift westward of District Four. But really what happened was things shifted to the west to account for where that new population is.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions on that? Whenever we obviously make any changes, there can be a domino effect. If it impacts one, it's going to impact at least another one, and then we have to balance the numbers along the way. And just as a reminder, in reading the maps, we have the solid red lines that define your current districts as they are right now. And on the benchmark plan, the solid red lines and the shading do not cross. On Plan One and Plan Two, anywhere you see a shading cross a red line, that would represent a change. But we also put some crosshatching on that and add the actual total population and racial composition as well, so you have that information. And that's the same process we use on Plan One and Plan Two. So if there-
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So doing Plan Two, you said you just kept District Six the same, grew a little west. So what was the one thing you're trying to do with Plan Two that drove that? Like, why did you do that? And if I missed the last meeting, and that's a simple question, I apologize, but like, we start with a reason, so what's the reason?
Mary Beth had actually emailed some input from council members regarding some changes. There were also, I don't think on this one, there was some citizen input, but I don't think that impacted Plan Two. But, Richard, that's mainly where that came from, correct?
I've been doing a little bit on the citizen input that we have, the kind of what we received from council members, those are kind of the two items that we received while we made the moves that we did.
Right. Because I know- Yeah. So my question was basically, why did we do what we did?
Why do we have a Plan Two?
Yeah, I mean, Plan One looked great to me. I don't really care what the plan is at the end of the day, whatever the citizens want. However, what's the reason? Because I know the last council meeting we had, Councilman Spears had a very good, I thought, comment and brought forward that, hey, the districts where we see the most potential for growth, let's, as allowable by law, let's undersize those as much as we can, allowing them the most headroom to grow, whereas the other districts, for lack of a better term, let's kind of proportionally, I don't know, pro-race or out term, but size them or whatever, seeing where the most growth would be, so that, you know, 10 years from now, you may not see that huge a change.
And we took that in consideration as well and tried to implement that, because that was a very good request, because of the distribution of where the new growth is occurring versus the districts that are pretty much already built out. So that was built in to this as well.
So if that's the case, and I'm just asking, District Two has more than District One as in its residents-wise, I don't know how that works. If District One is landlocked in the center of the city, it ain't really grow a lot.
District One goes out into Limestone County.
See, this plan-
It does have a little potential for growth.
See that?
But still-
I'm tracking now, yeah. So it does have room because of that, yes, thank you.
Now, one of the things that I was relating sending to Mary Beth, I had emailed about a tweak to Plan Two that I wanted to see if we could see what it would do. Are we at that point yet?
No, we're not there yet. How long-
Why don't we have Mr. Slaughter do his presentation?
Okay.
And then we'll move into, but those comments have been relayed to the consultant.
Okay.
Yes, and we can do that. And let me add this, there is an, there's an infinite number of plans that we could do here, and there's probably way more plans that will not make everybody happy, whether you're sitting here or whether you're sitting here. But ultimately, we're going to have to agree on and adopt a plan.
But what we're trying to do, and I think John, what John is alluding to, is currently District Two is going to have to lose approximately 42% of its population, which is huge compared to the changes in the other districts. And because of that, we want to make sure that we err on the side of giving a little bit more space for growth in District Two, and the other districts that go into Limestone County where we see the most potential for growth.
Right.
Yeah, and as Mike goes through the presentation, you'll see that District One, Two, Four are all in a negative variance, so they have room to grow. And then District Three is at .4% variance, so it's right at that, close to that ideal population. As we go through the presentation he has before you, it should show that. But those three districts that go over into Limestone County are all undersized currently. Now, it does vary how much they're undersized, but they are undersized, they can grow some more. And then even District Three could have some growth in it as well.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, I was going to mention, and one other thing before I got into this, when we get into the work session, certainly that's what we're here for. We have Plan One, we have Plan Two, and this is a work session where we can get input from your thoughts, because you live here, you represent the people, the citizens in your district and all, and certainly we want to have your input. And we're here because you want us to be here, to allow you to do that. So these right here, both in talking with the city council as well as the audience, what we have here in Plan One and Plan Two are really just preliminary working plans. We don't have one that we're saying, this is the one that we're recommending you to adopt. There could be many of those. But we do have a Plan One that's in balance and meets the requirements. We do have that Plan Two that's in balance and meets the requirements of the Voting Rights Act. And of course, there's numerous others as well. So unless there's any other questions, I'll quickly go through this.
Please do.
Then at the appropriate time, we can get into that work session as well. And your IT department, they're able to keep our PowerPoint up here. When I'm through with this, they will be able to switch to Richard's laptop, where you'll see exactly what he's doing there as well. So I appreciate their assistance on this. Okay? All right. Let's go to Slide Two, and that will be me. Let's see here. I got it on.
There it is.
Okay.
It's green light.
It was working.
It was green, I thought.
I congratulated the IT department too early. Now, there we go. All right, we can see here on Table One, and we have, we have the numbers for your existing district and the alternate district for the Plan Two. And you can see where it compares, first, the white population total and percentage, the black population total and percentage, and other races, total and percentage. We also have the total population here of District One as it currently exists, as well as District One as altered with Plan Two. We have our ideal population, which a reminder of that is the total population of the city divided by seven gives us our ideal population. And then we have any variance between, like District One was 1,000 under at 12.3%, now it's 371 under, or at a minus 4.6%. We have all of those numbers for each and every district, so you can see how it is right now versus how Plan Two impacts that. You can also see here where we take it from 70.7% down to 9.5%, which it needs to be at nine and, at 10%. And as I mentioned before, we really don't want one election district more than 5% over or more than 5% under. We like to keep that gap at less than, at 5% or less. And then we also have the information for the voting age, even though we read district on the total population. And then on Page Three, you can see graphically here how we have the election districts balanced with the nine and a half percent being between District One at 4.6% under, and District Five at 4.9% over that ideal population. And that's what those percentages and totals are compared to. Hello, Mayor? Are the ideal population. We also have graphically here depicted the racial composition of each district, as well as the comparison with the total population as it compares to the ideal population. So you can see this for each of your districts. This one here is District One. In the pie chart, you can see where we have black, white, and other, both the total population, as well as the racial composition. We have that same information for District Two, District Three, District Four, District Five, District Six, and District Seven. And so that, we have all that information. And of course, we have the corresponding map, which you have a copy in your handout. And we also have a large copy here on the easel. And that would conclude the presentation on the District Two plan. So at this time, I'll be glad to turn the meeting back over to you and answer any questions y'all may have, if you have any own plan, too.
Thank you. And I appreciate that you may not have realized this, but a number of the citizens had also echoed exactly what the council was pointing out in terms of making sure that the growth areas had reduced in number from the first plan. That's really the why between the first plan and the second plan.
That's right.
And so a number of citizens brought that to our attention as well. Now that we have this roadmap, I'd like to open it up to our council members to now ask you questions in terms of tweaks to this plan, in terms of what we might be able to shift or point out, or you might have divided a neighborhood you didn't realize, or maybe you did realize. And so we can ask some of these questions to you.
And let me mention one thing to you. We are able to tweak whichever one you want to. If you wanted to tweak Plan One, we're also able to tweak Plan Two. So Richard just needs to know which one we want to start from, and we can tweak from it.
Would it be easier if we started with one plan and then moved to another, or are you ready to toggle back and forth?
If you, if you all want to start with Plan Two, we'll start with Plan Two. Is that where you want to start from?
That would be good.
Okay. Well, let's get, let Richard get Plan Two up on his computer. And then what we will do is just communicate what changes that you would like to see, and what Richard will be able to do in the computer system. We're using ArcMap that has a redistricting module in it. And your IT department just put that up there. And so the results are not just like a punch of one button, but it'd just take a little bit, and he will have the new numbers for you. So, Richard, whenever you're ready, let us know. All right?
Okay, and let's start at this end. We're just going to go down by number, if that's okay, by district, and we'll start with District One.
Well, and I really just have two quick comments. Thank you for putting Park Meadow back together. I had talked with Mary Beth, the neighborhood was split, so I really appreciate that. And really, just, I'm fine with this, long-term, to just follow away in the back of your head, and I don't know how council will feel in 10 years, to maybe look at having a council district in Limestone County. And the reason I suggest that is we have Connie that's on Madison Utilities, we have a couple of North Alabama Gas members that are on their board. We don't have anybody, I don't think we have anybody on any of the Limestone County services, Mayor. You have a beard! And it's 100 degrees outside. But I don't think we have any-
Not in here.
That's true. I brought a sweater. I don't think we have any representation on the limestone, Limestone County side for utilities in particular, so maybe to just follow that away. There's no way to do that now, because we don't have a representative that lives in Limestone County. So I just wanted to share that for a constituent that reached out to say, hey, why don't we make Limestone County a council district? Which I think in a lot of ways is a great idea, particularly with regard to services. So that's all I had.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
With respect to the Park Meadow, I don't know if that change has been made yet. I know you emailed us.
Okay.
But-
It's changed on this map, where all of Park Meadow is together in District Four, right? Oh, no, it's not.
No, it's not.
Yeah, so that's my main concern, Mike, would be, and the reason that I think we would want to have neighborhoods together, if there's an issue in Park Meadow of speeding or, you know, the trash isn't getting picked up, there's less confusion with less people involved. So if you have one council member for that district, they can handle it directly without going, hey, Connie, I've got this situation, do you have this situation?
And this is-
It's, it bleeds a little bit from the yellow into the blue at the corner of Brown's Ferry and Old Madison Pike, or Brown's Ferry and Sullivan Street, Mark Brianna.
Right.
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
I can't remember if you have-
Yes, so see, so if there's a way, and I don't know if you want to just give that all to District Six? Happy birthday?
Yes, I want to.
Well, yeah, I'm talking about, yeah, because that's a pretty large subdivision, probably 250-ish homes. It would be great for that to all be one color. So is it going to District Six? And I'll give you cash and a player to be named later, or?
I'm not so sure, Mary Beth. Isn't that about 600 houses in Park Meadow?
In that little area, in the blue area of, um-
Okay.
Three, but probably about 200 houses, 380 people, 200 houses, is that what you're saying? Or, yo, hey!
Yeah.
Well, that's cool.
So, and let me explain what you're going to see up here as I work through this. So, so you look at this number right here, so the fourth column over, that's going to be what the new variances are. So that 5% that we're looking for, and being under 5% combined for total, with that move, what that does is moves District Four to negative 7.9, and then moves District Six to 7.1, essentially. So if a change is going to be made there, there's going to have to be some more population added to District Four somewhere, and we're going to have to take some population out of District Six as well.
So, well, you can't really tell, but on the eastern side of, on the very eastern part of the city, that little corner up to the north, so, yeah, so north of Old Madison Pike, what's shown there in District Six, maybe that goes to District Five. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not going to change, I'm not going to change this, but I'm going to select it. I believe this is the area that Mary Beth is talking about.
I don't know if council, if you all want to identify your comments, and then they make changes, or if you want them to make changes for each one of your comments, or because it all has a ripple effect, so you guys need to decide how you want to do this.
That's really all I had, was just to keep that neighborhood together. And I'm happy if I need to go over into Limestone County and get some Greggs or some Conny's to balance it out. But I- But, but I would love for, uh, subdivisions to not be split.
So, and what Mary Beth, I think, was saying, just to make sure Richard and I understand, is that you had that one comment.
Yes.
We could sit here and do a whole working plan, and then once we got Councilwoman Spears, then that would throw that out. And we might wanna hear all of your comments, and that's pretty much what, which makes sense. We may wanna hear all your comments as opposed to, uh, just one at a time.
Okay, so are you gonna save this version just for Mara and then move on to a second version for Connie, or you just-
You can't do that, 'cause then you have to start flipping everything around. So what you're saying is get all the comments, and then we can start playing, you know, expect there's a similarity with what everybody says.
Okay, but you can show us when, if Connie has a comment-
That's right.
What that would do to the map.
We, we can.
Okay, all right, so let's go in here what Mrs. Spears has to say.
Okay, I don't, I have a, a map here that marked up. It would be easier if I give you the map, or is it easier if I tell you where, where I'm going?
So it's this, this map here?
Yes.
So I can give- That's it?
Yes.
Yes. There you go, Richard. All right, so if you wanna explain that, and Richard and I will take a look at it.
Okay, along Volch Road, in, similar to what, um, Councilperson Robleski was saying, um, keeping neighborhoods together. Buckingham on, on Volch Road, off of Volch Road, that subdivision there. And, um, can you tell me the name of that, this street right there?
Uh, King's Cross Drive.
King's Cross Drive in that area, if you go north on Volch from where you are.
So, Richard, I think we'll keep-
So you're looking at the green district, okay, over there, it was, okay.
But what we're gonna do is we'll keep this change for right now, even though that throws us out of balance. And then we'll see what other changes we-
Okay.
Come on, I can't scroll.
So go to the left. Okay, see the bottom of the green, yeah, right there? Uh, there's two streets that go east-west and then some that go north-south. That little segment there would go into District Seven.
And so I'm gonna show you something here and kind of explain what's going on. So we were using US Census blocks.
Right.
And I select that area. Also picked up a much larger area all the way to Kentucky Drive. 'Cause what they typically do is they're looking for a hard boundary where a stream crosses a street, streets intersect.
Okay, well, if you, if you took that entire census block there, then, and put it into District Seven, and then along Waltryanna, so you're gonna go to the right, to that area right there, move it into District Five, so Waltryanna would be a hard line.
Mm-hmm, that's a good idea.
And then that would keep all of that kind of contiguous neighborhood together. We would then be, we would be dividing up my subdivision, but we're gonna have, looks like we're gonna have to divide up somebody's on-
Right.
Over there in the north side.
And I'm gonna ask, sorry, I'm gonna ask this question, so if I highlighted two blocks, that would move the line back to where it exists today, do we wanna do that?
Um, well, that makes a lot of sense to do that, yes.
I just wanted to, to ask, because, I don't know, that may be part of that subdivision to the north, if we're not gonna split it.
Okay, let's see what that, what that does when we get finished with the rest of the-
Now, I like the way we're doing this. We're gonna take what you want, regardless of the numbers, take what you want, regardless of the numbers, and then when we get to the end, we'll see what we have. And it's probably gonna require, it may work out.
It may work out.
I would go with it's gonna need some tweaking, but it may work out.
You never know.
But, but as Mara was saying, trying to keep neighborhoods as-
Absolutely.
contiguous as we can. There, even though you wind up taking Kentucky, that all opens onto Volch Road.
Mm-hmm.
And so that seems more aligned, yeah.
Can you tell us what the variance is with this new plan that Mrs. Spears is?
Fourth column there.
I can't see that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The fourth column, it would be your, your most out of balance, under is gonna be negative eight point three, and your-
About nine over.
Over is nine point, is nine point zero. But you also have-
Another one-
Now we have District Two that's under, District Four that's under, the five percent that would be ideal, and District Five and District Six are both over that five percent that would be ideal, so-
Another way to say it is District One and District Seven are the only two that are in balance. Uh, well, and District, District Three.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
So we have three out of seven that are in balance right now, but we haven't finished yet.
We're not done.
We're not done yet.
We're not done.
Yeah.
You don't have anything else?
That was all I had.
Okay, Karen?
Uh, you know, you made a lot of changes that I'd asked for, and I appreciate that. I am fine with taking in that extra bit that they added to mine, because I really don't have much place for, for new growth. So my numbers really are not gonna change. So if you need to make mine a little bit more later on, it'll, it'll even out, I think. So, but yeah, other than that, I think it all looks good.
Would it make sense to give Karen, um, and I'm thinking of school zones, how Foxfield goes to Bob Jones, would it make sense to give Karen that area of Volch Road up to, uh, where the orange goes at, um, I'm not sure what street that is, yes. So if, if you come down just a little bit to, uh, and a little bit left, see where that big area is of undeveloped area? If you scroll down just a little bit to like where my house is. See my house, the bottom red dot over there, no, the left, uh, that, no, your other left. There you go. And then straight, no, straight down one more, that's John. Down one more, where that white block is. Oh, okay, sure, sure, okay. So I live here, can we give, maybe give, what happens if we give this to Karen?
Karen's already over, isn't she?
Is Karen over? Oh, oh, I misunderstood, sorry, okay.
She's over, uh, she's at nine percent.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, never mind.
District Six. This is where all those dots.
Yes, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the dots are where we live.
I know.
Yeah.
So longer.
Okay.
Okay, so you, did you have any other tweaks?
No, really, I was, I was fine with it. I thought the boundaries looked really good now. Didn't seem to be cutting anything in half on mine anymore, I appreciate that.
Okay, John, did you have any tweaks?
I try not to do math in public. Uh, I mean, the only thing is, right there on the corner, uh, southwest corner of Boston Galeste, in the orange, um, District Seven, uh, I mean, that is literally one or two lots right now undeveloped, I think.
Mm-hmm.
No, there's some homes on there, um-
That's Applewood, right?
Uh, that's the very corner of Applewood, and essentially the homes on one side of the street, their pool, and whatever the heck gets built on the corner.
Yeah.
So, eh, from that standpoint, um, and the Papa Jacks, or whatever that is, um, I don't know, that to me makes very little sense, just to have that little sliver, um, right there, so, but, uh, southwest corner.
Oh, I see.
So, I mean, that, to me, is kinda, uh, quirky, and then back-
You got a, down where it says unchanged, directly below that?
No, that's unassigned, that's county.
Yeah, but it says orange right above where it's-
Oh, yeah, goodness, yeah. I don't know what that is. The very southernmost-
Not the orange?
I don't know, I-
The white part, oh, that, that.
That unassigned, so, I, I wish I could turn that off, but that's popping up in the redistricting toolbar, that's, that's, that's-
So if I can, it's-
Aren't in your city limits.
We're talking about directly below the pink, that, yes, that.
Yeah. Yeah, so the only way for that to be contiguous is for it to be connected to this piece right here that's orange.
Oh, 'cause there's county in between that and the-
Yeah, even though it doesn't show up, see that?
Oh, okay.
Or, and it needs to be contiguous, yeah, all right.
Yeah, that's, well, that's why you got it.
So that's fine, but, so the, my thought is, on that southwest corner, put that into-
Is that already zoning commercial, or is that?
Uh, no, that's residential as well.
Yeah, it's-
And it is commercial residential on the corner there, yeah. Um, the only other thing too, I was gonna mention, if you will scroll north, all right, so you want him to put that in District One, whatever the pink is, that's why you said District One, all right? And then if you'll scroll, scroll north, um, where Ms. Spears said, so eh, I don't know if you can zoom in, but where the very awesome, uh, well, then I screwed that up. Uh, thoroughbred trail, so that's literally, you got one road now that, that comes in and out.
Yeah.
If there's a way to make that contiguous, 'cause that would get the front part of your, of that subdivision.
Okay, well, wait, if you go down, scroll down, please, to fill it next one second, into the orange. Okay, see where the red line is? If you could just make everything north of that red line, nodding place and all that, put that back into D Two and see what happens.
Uh-
'Cause that's what currently is in D Two.
That's what's currently, yeah.
And so it should align with the census district if we do it that way. Does that pull D Two back into alignment? That's, John is-
Move, yeah, is.
Four point two eight.
Uh, District Four is out by a couple of percent, and District Five looks like it's way out.
Yeah, District, so that would leave us with three districts that are over the five percent that we're looking at. District Four is negative seven point nine percent. So it's under, District Five is nine percent over, and so it's over by four percent, and then District Six is six point six percent, so it's over by one point six percent.
Or District Two is back.
I don't know why.
Yeah.
District Two is fine, it is-
It is fine.
It is negative, basically, one, so it's, it's fairly close to that ideal population, well within what-
But you wanna be as close to negative five as possible.
We're really trying to make it smaller, so you-
Big negative number.
Yeah.
I'm okay with going back the way we had it, uh, before, since we were asking what I was thinking, um-
The original Plan Two or Original Plan One, what are you saying?
Uh, what we just did, just Ctrl-Z, undo. But I think what you were saying is if we just undid what you just did, yeah.
But then, that thoroughbred trail.
And I'm saying, put thoroughbred trail into, and then that way you got the very front of that subdivision all in one district.
Yeah.
And everything west of there, um-
What about, uh, the circle that comes off of the question?
Uh, depending on how that affects, yeah. Depending on how that affects that, that block there.
And I know what happens with that block.
That actually right there don't look too bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, what that's following is an unnamed, uh, water creek that they're picking up.
It's a creek.
Yeah, the nice little fishing pond my son gives to.
Yeah.
I know, I know fish in it, no fish in it, but it keeps him busy.
And what does that do to Two now? Does it bring it back?
It's at negative ten.
Oh, negative ten.
Yeah, so that would leave us with two districts that are in balance, District Three at point four, and then, well, okay, District One at negative four point three.
Yeah, which is fine, 'cause it goes into Limestone County, so there's opportunity.
But it's not fine, the, the, what this-
Five plus five.
What this exercise shows of what, of doing, and I'm just gonna state it like it is, it shows is doing what makes sense graphically does not work.
Yes, we see that.
That's what it, that's, that's, and so when we come in here with something that looks-
Oh, okay, District One at negative four point three.
Yeah, which is fine, 'cause it goes into Limestone County, so there's opportunity.
But it's not fine, the, the, what this-
Five plus five.
What this exercise shows of what, of doing, and I'm just gonna state it like it is, it shows is doing what makes sense graphically does not work.
Yes, we see that.
That's what it, that's, that's, and so when we come in here with something that looks-
Oh, okay, District One at negative four point three.
Yeah, which is fine, 'cause it goes into Limestone County, so there's opportunity.
But it's not fine, the, the, what this-
Five plus five.
What this exercise shows of what, of doing, and I'm just gonna state it like it is, it shows is doing what makes sense graphically does not work.
Yes, we see that.
That's what it, that's, that's, and so when we come in here with something that looks geographically doesn't always work numerically, uh, but I think it's a good exercise, and if there's any input on tweaking the balance it, or what you'd like to do next, because we, we see what we, we, we have once we implement all of your, uh, 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 suggestions.
Yeah, I think my only comment, I think several heard it, or voiced it, is as much as possible, trying to keep neighborhoods together to avoid the confusion down the road, as much as possible.
Right. And you know, we have our two requirements, one person, one vote principle, and we do, we don't want our redistricting plan to have the purpose or effect of discriminating against the protected minority voting structures, too, we have to go by. Uh, and then of course, we like to keep everyone in their own district, so, I mean, you were elected, certainly I don't want to put two of you in one and, and you have, one of you have to go. Uh, but after that, you're right, it, the best we can keep subdivision, subdivisions, uh, together, I agree with that. It's sometimes a challenge, but I also agree with, with what we heard at my, at our last meeting here, is in the areas of the city that are gonna have the highest growth, let's have them underpopulated. And we agree with that, which we, we did with the Plan Two here. Uh, so I, I, I agree, and, and those last two I mentioned have nothing to do with the Voting Rights Act. It just makes good planning sense to do that. Uh, so now we have it like it is, and we see our imbalance here, what's the wishes of the council at this time?
Um, well, first, I have one other question about your original Map Two, and that was with District Three. Um, it looks like District Three has potential growth, but it's one of the higher populated districts.
District-
Has town Madison, as well as downtown.
District Three is right at the ideal, it's thirty-five over is what it is, so it's only four tenths of a percent over.
Right, and I was wondering whether it was possible to bring them a little under-
Okay.
Because they're a growth, a potential growth area.
Right, so if we went back to Plan Two, if we could take them down a little lower?
I'm, I'm just curious, if you could do it and, and balance the demographics in a way that you-
And so, if you wanted us to, Richard, we could go back to District Two right now, and, um, I, I, I meant, I mean, Plan Two, I said District Two, sorry, uh, and see if we could take District Three, uh, down.
Bring it down just a little. I don't know if it's worth the effort, if it's gonna throw it off.
Richard, can we do that now? Go back to Plan Two and see if we can take the population in District Three down a little, I'm saying just move out with Plan Two, the numbers.
So you're liking it?
They got the numbers working.
Not an ideal solution.
There's no solution.
There's not.
There is not an ideal solution for this, and the more we tweak it, the more out of balance we get.
Worse it gets, yeah.
And because of the, the way the census districts are, or the census blocks, I guess it is, it is making it even crazier.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can sit here probably all night, and never figure this out, he probably has a, I'm gonna say, you got a program on that thing, because I know you're not calculating that, and you.
No, sir, I am not.
Right, it's, it's the redistricting module with ArcMap, yeah, so, so they wrote a program to do that for a reason. And, and let me say, tell you, and I certainly hear what you're saying loud and clear, and I don't have any disagreement with that, but let me tell you what our, what we want to do, is make every effort to where you're satisfied, once you do move forward with a plan, and that's the reason we're here today, and I think it was a great idea, Mary Beth recommended, let's just go all the way down and see what comes out here, because there's really an infinite number of plans, so we're here at the pleasure of the City Council, to do what you want to do, but you can see by going through this exercise, there's a reason we have some weird looking things geographically on the map, and there's not gonna be an ideal solution, there's just, it's not gonna be a perfect one.
Um, could I also suggest that we, I know we are limited in time this evening, in terms of how quickly, um, you can change lines, but we do have members of the public here to, this evening, who took the time to come, and if they had any observations they wanted to share with us, we could write down notes in terms of things that they would like us to consider, that we might not have considered, um, so I would like to give the public a chance to give us some comments on this District Two map, or, uh, Plan Two map, and we do have a microphone that we can pass around, uh, that I think Mary Beth has, and Beatty, I see you. Well, yet, well, you have people, um, at home, who want to hear what you have to say.
We're recording.
This is being televised?
It's strained.
You're on candid, you're on camera, camera. You gotta speak into the microphone.
I've been, uh, in many districts, I've voted at many different places, and as far as I know, there's always been subdivisions that were maybe in two different districts. This is nothing unusual, I'm sure it happens everywhere, so, I'm with John, come on, John, District Seven.
Yes, ma'am.
On Plan Two, you like Plan Two?
I really don't care.
Okay.
So, um, I believe we should go with the professionals, and all I can say is my district is split down Port Alain, right in the middle of the block, so, and it's been that way only since the last one, but to take these little tiny neighborhoods and start moving them around, I think we should go with the professionals, and thank you, Mr. Slaughter and Mr. Donovan.
Okay, is there anyone else from the audience, uh, who'd like to provide feedback?
Hi, Joshua Brown, District Four, um, I sent an email to everyone, so you, you know, I played around with this, I mean, it was a lot of fun for me as a citizen, you know, I really had a lot of fun, and it, it is very time consuming, um, again, I'm gonna reiterate, um, what Mara talked about, having a district that encompasses that Limestone County-Madison City, because even recently, um, I had, I have construction in my backyard right now, and trying to go back and forth between the city and the county, and try to figure out who to contact, and who to answer my questions, was, I mean, it, it was just a nightmare, um, we had a burn pit that was put too close to my home, I was getting ashes on my back porch, I finally figured out I'm, ADM was over that, um, they had the burn pit moved, and luckily, but, I mean, it took literally two days of my time to get that done, um, so we really do have a special problem, um, Limestone County-Madison City, and this particular land was, um, county proper, so then you've got three different entities, you're kinda all going around, and now, we've kinda got it down to the utilities, some of the utility companies know what's going on, when no one else knows what's going on, um, so I just wanted to reiterate that, I think that was a good comment that Mara brought up.
Joshua, who, who eventually got you the support you needed to get the burn pit moved?
I did.
Yeah, but who did you work with to get it done?
ADM, ADM, Alabama Department of Environmental Management.
How did you find out you were gonna, you needed to talk to ADM, is what he's getting to?
Um, I researched it online, and I even called.
You received an email from me?
Um, actually, you know what, maybe, maybe I did, but I had a girlfriend of mine, she lives in Weston, Connecticut, and she saw my Facebook post, and she said, have you tried ADM? Um, I'd have to go back at that, our communication, Connie, because I, I, but.
One of the things that I think bears consideration, when we're talking about a district in Limestone County, one of the things that I have dealt with as a major representative of, in area in Limestone County, having the, the largest population in my district in Limestone County, when there is an issue that deals with Limestone County, having multiple voices on this council is important, so, just bear that in mind, I'm not disagreeing that that would be helpful dealing with Limestone County, but, when you're dealing with the business of this council, having multiple voices who have a stake in Limestone County is of value.
Right, well, the other thing I was saying, too, is I was talking to everyone, I was like, I feel like, if I am actually in three different areas with three different representatives, I should have three representatives doing that work for me, right? But instead, they all passed me around from one to the other, and I kept circulating, so that was another.
I guess, the other, I was trying to find, so from a Limestone County Commission standpoint, did you have any communication with them, or any connection?
Yes.
And were they helpful at all?
No, there's absolutely nothing I can do.
And I think one of the best things we did as a city was work with Madison County, using the twenty-ten census, to, from a county standpoint, get all of Madison into one county district, I think part of what's happened in Limestone County is, Madison's grown in Limestone County, but we don't have a voice in Limestone County. They have good voices from a council standpoint, but no voice from a, um, from a county standpoint, and that's causing us some pain, because again, from a funding standpoint, we're an afterthought, so I think it's even more critical for whoever, you know, is, is a council member, supports the community by continuing to up to Limestone County, and then eventually, somebody's gonna need to run for a county commission seat in Limestone County, in the Madison community. So I do, I completely agree with what you're saying, I think you do get benefit with what we have right now, but we, we have to, from a county standpoint, get more involved.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, we all need to be talking together, I mean, we saw a little bit of that, um, with the school board versus the city, you know, is everyone working together, because they're two different entities, so the same thing has to happen with our Limestone County side. Okay, uh, thank you.
Thank you, so any other comments from the public, in attendance?
May I add something, uh, to, uh, what we just said, is with Plan Two, a characteristic of Plan Two, and even though all of the council members reside in Madison County, Plan Two, Limestone County has three different representatives on this council, which, in my opinion, that's a positive, it, it, and I see where you're coming from, it's sort of split up into three, but you have three, Limestone County has three representatives on this council, that you have a voice on this council.
And we're adding one, we're going from the current two.
Current, good point, it's at two right now, and we're taking it to three, so I just wanted to add that in.
Thank you, and let me ask you one follow-up question that came up earlier, if we adopt this plan, when does it go into effect?
And, and I'm, I'm not a, a lawyer, I'm an urban planning consultant, but I will give you my answer, is, is once you adopt this, and it could be within thirty days, sometimes cities have, of the way, considering the way they're chartered, it may say ordinances don't go into effect for thirty days, but my opinion is, once you adopt this plan, and the reasonable amount of time has gone by that's required, that this is, these are the new election districts, the reason, and the, and the reason I, I like that, and the reason, every city I've worked with, and every county and school district, they immediately go into effect, is that the voter rolls can be immediately updated, and you can start representing your new district, so you know who they are, and they know who you are, when it comes to Election Day, and so, you only have one, one set of election districts, once you adopt one, in my opinion, that's your new, new election districts.
So not to wait until the elections, start representing those people now.
It would go into effect.
Yes, that, that is my, that's my recommendation.
I, okay, yeah, that, that.
Mr. Kellor, do you have anything else to add?
I was just gonna say that, uh, basically, we have a section that basically determines what we can do going forward, and base, and what it says here is, within six months after publication of the cen, oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one, uh, the council shall enact a redistricting ordinance within six months after receiving such report, there's a strange provision here, it says, if the council fails to enact a redistricting ordinance within that period, the redistricting plan submitted by the mayor shall automatically become effective, so, we have six months, but we can do it much, much earlier than that, so that's the timing statutorily that we have.
But the timeline that we have, I think that we put out on the website, was hoping that we might have a public hearing and vote on this plan in October, so, if, once we vote, if it happens in October, does it go into effect immediately?
It would go in fact, uh, seems, I believe that we have it published, as far as the ordinance, yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but yes.
Yes.
So we would then start representing a different geographic area?
That's the way I under, that's the way I understand it.
My answer would be yes to that question.
I would like to ask, when this becomes official, and we'll say it's January first, for the lack of, you know, argument, we send a card to every registered voter that has some sort of.
A new district.
Thing that's gonna kinda catch their eye, and they're not gonna just toss it and recycle then, that says, you have a new district council member, you have new representation, something that will really, you know, bland that they're gonna toss, and our contact information, you know, here's, you know, my cell number, my email, if you're up to that, I mean, for sure, our email address, something that we can send, is something like that possible, where we send something to every registered voter that's eye-catching, like, not maybe from the county, where it's just, you know, that regurgitated card that's kinda.
I'd be careful, that could be.
Email, or social media, blah, the blitz, would be great.
Yeah, but there are a lot of people that, you know.
I'm not, I'm.
If your polling place changes, that automatically happens from the circle. And, and get Greg to do a news article, there are all sorts of opportunities, but something that goes directly to that voter-registered hu- household.
I think, I mean, we have a communications team, why don't we ask them to?
And I, I think the clerk's office also has to notify people.
I was gonna say, we could get with the city clerk, and she could figure out what that cost is, and you guys could authorize the approval of that.
Right.
Um, if, if you so desire, but, well, well, Lisa's over there, she's listening to everything, um, but, yeah, she can look into that before.
Okay, right, so, is that everyone's questions?
And I will just add, um, you know, we've been, in response to the comment about District Three being a little high, because there's gonna be a lot of growth in District Three, Richard's been kinda working, uh, as you guys have been discussing, just kind of tweaking, trying to, he was very, very close, we thought we had victory in our grasp, but, um.
We snatched it from you.
Yeah, so, uh, he has been adjusting a little bit, and I, I don't know how close he is, but we may wanna just talk about that, I know you were fine with going back to Plan Two, but if we can, you know, make a couple of adjustments, one of the adjustments he made was to put all of Park Meadow together, um, but, uh, so I don't know if there's further discussion, or if we wanna have him kind of review some of where things are now.
Um, sure, if he's close, then we can go ahead and, um, see what he's got.
And, and Richard, uh, let me add one thing while you're getting ready, over there, on the, on the process, on the, on, on the process here, and let's just assume we're going with Plan Two, uh, and we have, we're gonna have a public hearing next, uh, in October ninth, but I would recommend, when we have a public hearing, let's make it a true public hearing, to where we're actually getting that input from the public again, once again, getting that input, and it may or may not change the plan, but I would recommend not planning on adopting that plan in the public hearing, but at your, one of your next meetings.
Right, that is on our schedule.
The plan is to do adoption October twenty-third.
Okay, great, alright, good, I'm glad to hear that.
Okay.
Okay, so, is Richard gonna walk us through that?
Richard, the spotlight's on you.
I, I don't know, I, I kinda like guys that, Richard, that's my husband's name.
All right, I leave. So, so I've worked up something here to keep the, the one subdivision that gets mentioned about being split.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna caveat that by saying I, I've all, all in likelihood split another subdivision, so go ahead and forgive me for that before we get to it, um, but I'll go through, show you the changes I've made, then we'll discuss the variances, because one of the, one of, one of the things here is, we tried to keep anything that was going into Limestone County lower, well, we're on the opposite end of the spectrum on one of the war, or one of the districts that extends into Limestone County, but we'll, we'll walk through where I made changes, and, uh, you can tell me to scrap it, it's not gonna hurt my feelings, and we can go to what, what we have in Plan Two, um, but we'll, we'll see what you think of this, of this, so, this is, um, an area, oh, and before I get going, so you're gonna see two solid colored lines this time, one red, which is still your existing wards as they fall today, you're gonna see an additional in purple, and that's what, where Plan Two boundaries are, so that's to help me notice where I've made some changes and cross that Plan Two, um, so, this is one of the first changes I made here in District Six, so north of the railroad tracks, what is in District Three currently, um, and east of, is that Shelton Road, has been moved from our, our District Three to District Six, okay, and then, the subdivision that, that everybody felt strongly about keeping contiguous, versus it going to District Six, south of the water course that's in there, is going into District One, everything south of that, till you get to Brown's Ferry, that whole neighborhood, to District One, um, which I believe is that, that's its current district, so it's staying.
It is, it is, yes.
What that, that caused is some movement between District Three and District Four, in the area of, this is.
Inken Row.
Inken Row, Front Street, and then Meadow Drive, to, I believe that's Arrowhead Trail. to what, what we have in Plan Two. But we'll, we'll see what you think of this. So this is an area, oh, and before I get going, so you're going to see two solid colored lines this time, one red, which is still your existing wards as they fall today. You're going to see an additional in purple. And that's what, where Plan Two boundaries are. So that's to help me notice where I've made some changes and cross that Plan Two. So this is one of the first changes I made here in District Six. So north of the railroad tracks, what is in District Three currently, and east of, is that Shelton Road, has been moved from our, our district three to District Six. Okay? And then the subdivision that everybody felt strongly about keeping contiguous versus it going to District Six, south of the water course that's in there, is going into District One. Everything south of that, till you get to Brown's Ferry, that whole neighborhood, to District One, which I believe is that, that's its current district, so it's staying.
It is, it is.
What that, that caused this movement between District Three and District Four in the area of, this is-
Inken Row.
Inken Row, Front Street, and then Meadow Drive to, I believe that's Arrowhead Trail. So that would have went from District Four to District Three. And then we move over into the limestone county with the divide and being Hardman Road. Everything south of that is in District Four, to the north of that is District One. And then just to get, I was within seven people of having it within balance. I had to find somewhere to, to get at least seven people. So I went to this area of Bearberry Lane, Bellwood Lane, and then Appleton Lane, moving that out of District Two into District One, got us where we have seven districts that are all in balance. Well, what that does is District One, which goes into limestone county, is negative three point four. So you've got a little room to grow there. District Two, which also extends into limestone county, is negative four point four. So you've got some room to grow there. District Three, that's fully in Madison County, but it's an area Mary Beth mentioned there was some growth occurring, it's negative three point five.
District Two is actually four point nine, isn't it, as opposed to four point four? District Two?
It's negative four point nine.
Yeah, negative four point nine, right.
And then District Four, this is the one, this extends into a portion of limestone county, is four point nine eight. You might as well call that five, but within balance. And then District Five is fully within Madison County. It's four point nine one. So we're just under four point nine, good there. District Six, negative one point one. And then District Seven is positive three. So we're, we're within, you know, five percent, which is what we're looking for, for each of those. You know, we're, we're just under that ten percent total, if you look at the Houston lowest. But this is a balanced plan that maintains that, that neighborhood continuity, you know, better than, than what we've had on Plan Two or Plan One. It's just another, another option.
Okay. Now, what Richard just said was sort of a good bit to absorb, and he did a great job on that, in my opinion, telling you that. So if you're wanting to see that plan, we could go back to the office and call that a Plan Three if you wanted to, and then send that over for you to see the hard copy of that.
Is there a way that if he had a little more time, he could fix the four and six? Because you're, you're too, you're too high in four, you're too low. And if you had a little more time to play with it?
Tweak it, yeah.
Yeah. If we could just have a little more time to let you kind of, two had great numbers. You had some great numbers, we just split some neighborhoods. So that's, yes.
Yes. So that helps three, but we've messed up four a little bit. We've given it back over, and so we need to bring it back down a little bit.
Yeah. And then, and just, I don't mind doing that. What I think that's going to require, I've spent a lot of time looking at these numbers, is District Six is probably going to come a little bit down into District, part of District Three's area some more. And then District Three's going to go into District Four a little bit.
That's probably what we're going to do.
Draw that number down, with the, ultimately, what you're doing is moving in District Four, Four and Three, to get more people into Six. So you're, that's the shift you're probably going to see is to the south and west.
So do you want him to try to do that right now, or do that when we're back in the office? What is your request?
I'd rather, I don't know if you've got the time to do it right here, and we need to take a break before the city council meeting. So I'd rather you have time, we have two council members missing that affects their districts. I would rather give you a little more time, send it back to us to see if you can make those numbers realigned, and then-
And Richard, you know exactly what the request is?
Yep.
Right, okay. And that would be the best way to work it. I know we've been going for over an hour now.
Y'all have been great.
Well, thank you. Y'all have been great to work with, and so has everyone in public participation, great to work with. It's truly been a pleasure. And we, we take this as a priority and take it very seriously. But I think that would be a great idea to allow him to make those tweaks, get you a Plan Three over here. You may or may not go with it. You may still go with Plan Two or Plan One. We, we just want to make the council as happy as we can.
Ryan, did you-
And Council President, I just have one thing to say. I did want to reiterate that after looking at the code section, it does say here that no new district boundary shall become effective until the next regular municipal election. So hopefully, thirty-five months.
They won't come into effect until-
Okay.
Right.
So then we don't, it would cause confusion if we sent out information too early. So right before the election in 2025, you know, maybe first of the year, that's when we send it out and say, your district may have changed. If we send it now, I, I just fear, I'm fearful that it'll cause some confusion with, who do I contact? And they do contacting, you know, one of them.
Yeah, it seems like it wouldn't matter.
Not a city attorney, not a attorney general.
Then it, yeah, then it-
I would just say, look at the last time the council did it and kind of redo, I mean, look at what they did and redo that. When I say the last council, the last council that redistricted. They do this every ten years.
Right, years ago, was it, right? Okay, then we will go ahead and adjourn our work session, and we'll be back for a city council meeting at six P M. Thank you.
Thank you very much.